Good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, May 22nd, 2024, meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session since 6:00 PM following a tenure ceremony. The time is now 7:24 PM. Can I have a motion, please, to open the public meeting, reopen the public meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, good evening, I'd like to start on a high note. This afternoon, we had our tenure ceremony for, I think, 23 members of our...
I think it might have been 25.
Might have been 25 members of our faculty and administration receiving tenure this evening. This is incredibly exciting for them, obviously, but for the district as a whole and for our kids who will continue to benefit from their amazing teaching, leadership, and guidance. The tenure process in this district is not easy, nor should it be, but each of these educators has shown not only a very high level of skill, but also kindness and dedication to our kids. So congratulations to everyone receiving tenure this evening. Switching gears to yesterday's vote and election. Firstly, congratulations to Kaylee on your reelection. We look forward to working constructively for the good of the district and our students. Second, obviously, the budget failed. While Dr. Ackerman is going to speak in more specifics about how the timeline works for another budget vote, I want to talk about a few things. We had the highest voter turnout maybe ever in this community for a school budget vote. This is a good thing. If you're lucky enough to have the right to vote, you should exercise it at every opportunity. Your voice, your vote is your voice, and yesterday, we heard the voices of roughly 2,000 community members that you disagreed with our proposed budget. What's really resonating with me in the wake of this is how many of these voices are ones we haven't heard from before and how we fix that moving forward. Because while we truly want the input and opinions of everyone in the district, I think we can all agree that the budget vote isn't really the best way or time to get that information. As board members, we believe truly that a major piece of our job is being responsive to the community, and we thought that we were. That was clearly wrong, based on yesterday's vote, and I believe that a priority going forward needs to be ascertaining how to get more accurate data on community opinions. Part of that is going to be figuring out how to get more people to participate in our data gathering processes. I know that we have heard from some people over the past months that you were opposed to the budget, and for most of the people who wrote us, that was centered around the money being allocated for SROs. The number of people who reached out to us opposing SROs, however, paled compared to the feedback we received over the past 18 months through surveys, focus groups, and emails demanding SROs. We truly believed that the budget we put forward reflected the wants of the majority of the community, and we were very clearly wrong. So here is my ask of the community. Please engage in our feedback process with the same vigor in which you engaged with the vote. Keep voting. 3,000 voters, while high for here, is still a fraction of the electorate eligible to vote. You will be receiving a survey over the email in the next 24 hours, asking for feedback as we prepare our next iteration of the budget. It will be anonymous, but please help us make it useful information, only take it once per voter, and only if you're actually a registered voter. I know I keep repeating it, but we really are trying to respond to the community, and we can't do that without accurate data. I know that whichever way you voted yesterday, you did it out of care and concern for our children and our schools. There were people who were adamantly opposed to our budget, who gave hours of their day yesterday to ensure a safe and smooth electoral process, because that's the community we live in and the kind of community we want to live in. We are engaged, and we can disagree with each other, and we will move forward and come out together for the good of our kids. I believe in our team, and while this isn't the outcome I hoped for, the community has spoken, and we will regroup, and we will come out stronger for it. I truly believe that and hope you will partner with us to make it so.
Can I, is it okay if I add something?
Yeah.
So, we really have to embrace democracy. It was in action yesterday, and I feel like we had many families last night give us a very clear message about how this community felt about additional police officers in the budget. And so, moving forward, my team and I are with your guidance, because you can adopt a contingency budget, or we can go back out to the voters, and our recommendation is going to be to provide a tax compliant budget for voter consideration in June. And that's not to say that we won't continue to utilize the very best practices in place to keep our students safe. I know we all want that as a community, and so I don't question that at all, even based on the outcome from yesterday. So you have our commitment that that will still be at the forefront of our considerations, but moving forward with additional police officers, I think doesn't make sense, because I feel like the community as a whole gave us absolute clarity on that issue without question. And so I did, I did want to say that, because that's where I'm thinking, but if anyone else had a different position, if you could share that with us before we start to begin to plan for our work session, which I'll talk about for next week, it would be helpful to know that publicly.
So, I will say that I agree with that, but as the team continues to look at what a tax compliant budget proposal would look like, I would like the team to continue to prioritize the lower elementary school class sizes. I think that that is something where there does, we have not heard, we've not heard a negative opinion on that. We've certainly been hearing from both our faculty and our families for as long as I've been on this board, that that is a priority, and I would like that to, as we continue to work through what the next proposal will look like, I would like that to continue to be a priority. And I completely agree with another proposed budget at the tax levy limit, as opposed to going to contingency at this point.
I also want to acknowledge that I know, I received emails today from families, and I appreciate the tone and the way in which our families are communicating to us around this, around their concerns, and I, and there is some suggestions in there that if we were to put a budget back in front of voters, even if it was above the levy limit with the removal of the SROs, it would be successful. I don't recommend that at all. That is too big of a risk for this community. And so I am strongly recommending that if we do put a budget back up, it should be at the levy limit. Unless, unless anyone here feels otherwise, the risk of that, not receiving the 60% in those circumstances, now that we would be moving towards contingency, is pretty significant.
No, I would not feel comfortable putting forth another above cap budget, because as much as I think that there are a lot of parents who are speaking very honestly when they say that with removing SROs, they would vote for an above cap budget, I think there are many other community members who said very clearly to us, "I don't care really what it is in the budget, I'm not voting for any budget over the cap." And so I think that it would be way too risky to go out with an above levy limit budget a second time and risk having to go to contingency.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I would like to add a couple of things as well. First of all, congrats to all of our newly tenured teachers, and congrats to Kaylee on the election last night. I also want to take a moment and reflect on the budget vote last night. Hillary, you and I have a lot of the same themes in our messages. It's become very clear that we got it wrong. We thought we were giving the community what they wanted, we thought that it would be worth it to you to go over the tax cap, to give you those items that we felt the majority of people have been asking us for over the course of the last two years. Well, last night, you came out in abundance to tell us that you felt differently. Some people wanted SROs but didn't want to go over the tax cap to get them, some people just didn't want to go over the tax cap at all for any reason, and some people just didn't want SROs at all. And all of those are really valid reasons. The whole point of voting is that we get the community's opinion. In the end, over 3,000 people came out and voted, which is actually really amazing. We haven't had this kind of turnout for an in-person vote since the late 70s or early 80s. I checked. This level of community engagement is terrific and exactly what we want and need. I'm thrilled that you all came out, dealt with the parking, waited in line, just so we would hear your voice, and it was worth it, because we hear you, and we will bring a tax cap compliant budget. Frankly, what I'm most upset about is that we didn't have a true pulse of the community. Relying on surveys, coffees, and incoming emails did not give us the full picture. We heard from the people who felt very strongly for and against, but we didn't hear from the huge middle swath of our community. We need to find a better way to get a sense of everyone's voices. I'm not sure what the answer is, but I hope that those of you who first raised your voices at the voting booth yesterday will stay engaged with us, so we can better represent you. We need to do a better job of both finding the consensus and discovering new methods in which to find it. Our next steps are going to be to get back to work on a tax cap compliant budget. Please stay engaged with us as we move forward together. We will vote on a new budget again in June, and I hope that we can find the common ground, which is always our kids.
I just want to say that apparently I misspoke. There is a survey going out, and it's not anonymous, because we may want to get additional feedback based on people's suggestions. So it is going to be open-ended of what are you hoping to see in the next budget iteration, but we will be asking for...
Your name.
So that we can follow up if there are things that we don't know or don't understand, but nobody is asking any questions about how anybody has previously voted, or if you voted, or anything like that, only what you'd like to see going forward that we do with this next iteration of the budget.
I do want to just take a moment just to, to thank our community. I'm so humbled and overwhelmed by the tremendous support from the community. We have work to do, and we need to come together and try again to do better, all of us, and I have faith that we can, I do. The community is telling us to do better. We have been given another chance, and I am confident that my board and I with the administration can figure out a way to get back on track and move us forward. I thank my fellow candidates for putting themselves out there and engaging in this process to serve our community. I know we're asking the community to give us more feedback, and, but I don't believe that feedback alone, or surveys alone, is the way that boards govern. I think the balance of the feedback with what it, that we get from the community should be balanced with our judgment. It doesn't substitute the board's judgment in what we think is the right direction for the community. So I just want to put that out there, and I would like the administration to prepare a tax cap compliant budget.
So David, can you pull up my slides? And I also want to extend my congratulations to our huge tenure class and thank our administrative team and our...
We can do it after. So we have a cer, we have so many tenure candidate that we do a ceremony before the board meeting, so it's, it's more manageable. And so the board will be acting upon my recommendation tonight, but I do want to acknowledge, we had, we have an incredible tenure class this year across all six of our schools and in our district office, and so I'm just really proud to be able to present these candidates to the Board of Education tonight for your consideration. So I do want to just thank them, and we will send out a press release tomorrow so that the community can congratulate them as well. Okay, now here is the new budget calendar. Now, this is very tight, and so, and it's designed to be tight, and it's really grounded in procedures and regulatory language, so there's not a lot of wiggle room. And so, one of the reasons why we're sending out a survey to find out from the community what they would like us to prioritize is because there's not really time for major feedback. And so, next week, the 29th, in the Greeley Academic Commons, we're going to have a work session to try to hash out and finalize what will be, what the district will be presenting to the board on June 3rd for adoption. So you'll see this is rarely tight, we usually go from January to April, but we clearly can't do that here. And so, if we're able to hash out the new budget, which will be tax cap compliant, then the board would be acting on that on June 3rd, so that we would be able to schedule our hearing and give the appropriate notice on June 11th, which would then trigger the mailing, which will be a very condensed mailing with just basically the financials to the community, and then we would have a revote on the 18th in the gym, and then the board would have to meet on the 20th to accept the results. So this is the condensed timeline that we're going to be followed, but we can do it, we can do it. We, I feel like we have, we have a process to collect some feedback. We already had gone through the process of developing a tax compliant budget back in January, we were able to make some adjustments, we were already talking about it today, and then we'll go over those collectively, and if anyone wants to come and watch that, it's the work sessions open to the public, so you're welcome to do that, it'll be right in the academic comments. And so then, I just want to share that tonight, we're going to be sending out from the board the, the letter articulating the timeline and then asking for feedback, and we'd like all that feedback from you by Tuesday morning, so that we can look through it, the board will be able to see all the comments, we can identify some themes, so then we can come into the meeting on Wednesday ready. Any questions about that? Okay. All right, so now we're going to just go over, we have a candidate, our new assistant principal on the agenda for the board's consideration tonight, so Andrew, would you like to just share some, some information about Christina?
Sure, of course. So Christina Mauricio has gone through a thorough process with us here, a series of interviews with constituent groups that range from administrators, teachers, parents, and students. She has a really strong track record of being a world language chair in Connecticut, it's an administrative position going across middle school and high school. She's a, has a real expertise in curriculum design and instruction and coaching instructional leaders. She's done some really nice shifts with the world language program where she is in terms of managing how students, making some changes, how they move from one grade level in middle school up to the high school. She's done lots of community building too, and created some wonderful trips overseas with students that she's piloted, and we've just been, I think she's going to be a fantastic fit. Her references were glowing, and we're really excited to have her join the team at Greeley.
The AJC had done focus groups for us, and they have provided the executive summary, which I've shared with the Board of Education of those focus groups, and that will be placed tomorrow on the Culture, Community, and Belonging webpage on our mainframe under the Middle East update. So if any of our families would like to review that, that's where that will be housed. And I'm, I'm happy to report a lot of the concerns that were brought forward in those focus groups we've addressed by some of the adjustments that we've made in, in our work. So I appreciate our parents for giving us feedback through that process. And if anyone has any questions about the executive summary after we review it, you can certainly call myself or Andrew, because we work closely with AJC, and we'll be able to answer your questions. And the last thing before we just look forward into our schedule ahead is I just wanted to share on the agenda tonight, there's a SMOA addressing class size in 7th grade for Belfer this year, because we're, we came up with a settlement around section load and trying to make sure that we have clarity when we need to support teachers, because they have one or two additional students that enter in the classroom during the school year, which we have for our case, six teachers, but we didn't have it for seventh grade teachers. So, in working with the union, we came up with a, with a settlement agreement to address that concern, because it's not clarified with specificity in the contract. So that's what, that's about this year, and it's, it doesn't apply to next year, so I just want to make that clear to the community if they have questions about that on the agenda. And so that is the end of my report. Just a reminder, we're off on Friday, we're off on Monday for Memorial Day. We have our work session here at, at 12:00 noon on Wednesday, and then we start to have our, our spring concerts. We have our musical next week, and on the 3rd will be our budget adoption meeting, and that will take place here. And again, we'll be sending this all out to the community tonight, and then on the 5th, even though we don't have a meeting that night, we're still going to have a retiree celebration at 4:30, because we've already established that. So, thank you, and that's the end of the superintendent's report.
Okay, so we should address the items under the president's report 1.1.1. I will move 1.1.1 that the Board of Education hereby ratifies the report of the May 21st, '24 school budget vote and election. Can I have a second? Questions or concerns? All in favor? Okay, that 1.1.2 is what Dr. Ackerman just referenced, that we've had to revise our schedule of meetings to account for the revote.
I'm sorry, Hillary, that's the calendar for next year.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's 1.1, okay. So 1.1.2 is the 2024-2025 Board of Education meeting schedule draft, which is our meetings for the next school year, starting in July.
So usually, we present that to the board publicly, and then you'll let Lisa and I know if there are any conflicts, and then we'll adopt that at the next meeting. Okay?
So we will, we do not need to ratify that yet, that is a draft, we will all go home and look at it and let each other know if there are issues. 1.1.3 is the revised schedule of meetings for this year to accommodate the fact that we need to do the budget revote. Yes?
Question. So the retiree celebration is still happening on June 5th, but we are not having a meeting afterwards.
Okay, thank you. I will move 1.1.3. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to committee reports. Does anybody have any committee reports?
I have two. Just one, I guess, final real reminder. June 8th, which is two Saturdays from this coming one, Captain Lawrence in Mount Kisco, the Greeley boosters are having a fundraiser for athletic teams. Should be a great evening, I would get your tickets, should be a great time. And then, for the Green Committee, I was once again unable to attend due to a work obligation, but Adam did visit Bell with the team. They toured the garden, the hydroponics room, the steam facility, and the courtyard, which actually has an aquatic garden. And in each space, the Bell faculty members took the committee around and shared the lessons that they impart to their students there. And as Adam told me, they are also discussing the possibility of applying to be a designated green ribbon school, and Adam, I'm going to let you explain what that actually means.
Yeah, so recently, Greeley was awarded a blue ribbon school status, which is basically around academics, a green ribbon school, there are green ribbon schools and green ribbon districts, and it's basically a commitment to, around sustainability and evidence that you've made progress with regard to not just your facilities, but also like sustainability education. So the committee's interested in exploring that as a possibility, see if we've done enough already as a district to potentially apply. So we might, might pull a team together over the summer and see if we can submit that application.
That's it.
Anybody else? Before we move forward, I, to public comment, I want to thank Lisa. So, probably much more than apologizing to the community for the fact that we need a budget revote, we should be apologizing to poor Lisa. But Lisa, thank you. I mean, we, yesterday was intense. Biggest community turnout maybe ever is a lot, but we thank you so sincerely, and we apologize to making you do it again, and we know you'll do it brilliantly, and thank you also to our PTA volunteers.
It's like an encore. It's like an encore performance.
Yes. We hope we can count on our wonderful PTA to help us also do this again. But it really, look, the budget vote, whichever way it goes, is a community endeavor, and it's a lot of hands on deck, and it's a lot of effort, and we really appreciate the effort that everybody put in. So that brings us to our public comment period. We welcome public comments, and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may also be contacted via email and phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented, and as always, I ask you to please not use any identifying information. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Warren Gottlieb. I'm a parent in the district. First of all, I just wanted to say that, you know, regardless of how last night went, I wanted, I wanted to let all of you know personally that as a parent, I do appreciate all the work that all of you do all year long, and I wanted to make sure that that was said here tonight. I did, I wasn't going to get up, but I did hear that there were some, what I thought were some sweeping generalizations about last night's results, and I don't purport in any way to be the pulse of the community, I'm far from it, but I would really caution about making big generalizations about yesterday. And I'm happy to tell you individually after the meeting why I think it would be a very big mistake to do that. I did look at the results yesterday, and I think they say some things that, that indicate that generalizations could only compound the problem. So I just leave that there. With respect to, you know, feeling as though you're hearing from the community, look, I came here earlier in the year, and I suggested to you that every six weeks, unless people started to behave badly, that you have one session Q and A, and that you don't put three-minute time limits on folks so that they come in here and talk to you more. I also think, look, I used to sit on the finance committee, and I don't think that committee even exists anymore. I think even physically, the way that the room is set up for our meetings, there's a huge distance here. COVID is over, and I'm not so sure that it, I know it's somewhat of a small thing, but I actually think there's no reason why there should be this much distance between us. So I know your timeframe is compressed, you're not going to be able to accomplish all those things, but I would really strongly caution you about drawing sweeping generalizations. That's just my two cents. I was happy to see that the AJC Executive Committee, Executive Summary is available. I actually would love to read the entire report, so I would love to know when that's going to be available, and also when we would get the full ICS consultant's report, if it's being done. If it's just the AJC report that's done, I actually would like to dig into that a bit more. And again, I just want to let you know that I, as a parent, do appreciate everything that the board members and administration does, and I'm sure that the district will emerge from this. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. First off, thank you for all the hard work. My name's Matthew Parker, I have two kids in the district. Last night's result to me was very surprising. You know, I would echo the previous commenter's comments on, don't take sweeping generalizations on why this went south, right? It wasn't a stiff jab, it was an uppercut. You know, it was a shock blow, right? And I think one thing has to be rebuilt, regardless of the options that we take here. Tax cap levy, budget, great, good start, but there's something called trust, I think, that has to be rebuilt within the community in one way, shape, or form. That vote last night showed me, as a parent in this community, that that kind of got lost in the weeds, whether it's how these meetings get approached, whether it's topics that we discuss, making assumptions that SRO killed the budget versus, you know, a budget that keeps going up, but our enrollment stays flat. Like, items like that have to be looked at from an outside lens, you know, and trust has to be built, because anything that we put forth, tax cap compliant or not, I think you're still going to get pushback from that community that now is looking at everything with a, you know, second look. Thank you again for all the support, I look forward to seeing what the budget puts, the Board of Edges puts forth for the next budget, and looking forward to continuing the discussion with the district.
Well, if there are no other public comments, then we will move on to approvals and ratifications. Okay, so, looking at 3.1 and 3.2, we can take those together, that is accepting the minutes of the May 8th board work session and the minutes of the May 8th Board of Education meeting. So I will move 3.1 and 3.2. Can I have a second, please?
A second.
Questions or concerns? All in favor?
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I'll move that we accept 4.1 as presented.
Any questions or concerns? Other than to say congratulations again to everybody who received tenure today, it's a big accomplishment. All in favor?
Recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendations under 4.2.
A second.
Questions or concerns? All in favor? That brings us to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to, adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually any particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. So as a preliminary matter, is there anything that anybody would like to remove from tonight's consent agenda? Then can I have a motion, please, for the consent agenda, which is items 5.1 through 5.18?
Move.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor? That brings us to six. There is nothing under six. So seven is un, there's nothing there, okay. So that brings us to eight. We can take 8.1 through 8.4 together. 8.1 is acknowledging receipt of the Claims Auditor Report for April of '24. 8.2 is acknowledging receipt of the Revenue Status Report for April of '24. 8.3 is acknowledging receipt of the Appropriations Status Report for April of '24. And 8.4 is acknowledging receipt of the Treasurers Report of April of '24. So can I have a motion, please, for 8.1 through 8.4?
Moved.
Questions or concerns? All in favor? Okay, that brings us to notice of future meetings. This is not the correct information. We've, no, 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 it's not you. We just revised it, like...
Two hours ago.
Ten minutes ago. So for notice of future meetings, see previous slides. We will be meeting, again, our work session to go over the feedback that we get in response to the survey going out, and also to have our conversation about what we believe is the best way to move forward with this budget that will be before the community on June 18th, will be next Wednesday at noon in the academic commons, and the rest of the meeting schedule will follow as outlined previously. Okay, can I please have a motion to adjourn at 7:57 PM?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.